Why didn't you write me? Why? It wasn't over for me. I waited for you for seven years and now it's too late.
I wrote you 365 posts. I posted every day last year.
You wrote me?
Yes.
You...
It wasn't over. It still isn't over. You see, Facebook just changed their algorithm. You won't see our posts unless you follow.
What?
Just go to the top of the page, click "Follow," and then "See First."
Oh, well.
Have you seen this crazy yodeling kid? OMG, it's so funny.
Hello, Mother. Something smells good.
Good morning, sweetie. I'm making breakfast for you. Can you clean the bacon pan for me?
Sure thing. No, Billy, don't do it. It's bad for your pipes and bad for the environment. Don't listen to him, Billy. Just pour it down the drain and forget about it. What's a little grease going to do? Actually, there's a lot that grease can do to damage your home and the environment. Picture this. When you decide to pour fats, oils, or grease down the drain, you are letting those substances harden up and stick to your pipe walls, causing clogs and backups in your home that can eventually lead to expensive repairs. And can also cause gross smells and a nasty situation for your neighborhood and the environment.
You can smell it.
Instead, when the substance cools down, stick it in a plastic container. Make sure the lid is sealed tight and drop it off at your nearest cooking oil recycling station in Hillsborough County. That way, you're helping the environment and saving your family money. So think about you, that new skateboard you've always wanted. It's a win-win for everyone.
New skateboard? Oh, yeah. Your way is definitely better than mine. Let's recycle that grease.
For more information on how you can recycle your fats, oils, or grease, visit hcflgov.net/corps.
Please sign to register at the rear of the room if you'd like to speak on any items that are not on the agenda today. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Then the applicant will be given an opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the commission. When recognized by the chair, public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Doughty to lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance. All rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. Only you know what we will accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We all have different talents, different abilities, but time to work. Our prayer today is that your will will be done through this event. Take what has been prepared and multiply our efforts as only you can. Steer our intentions to align with your will. Come fully into any situations, both as a group and individually, and sort out any feelings or thoughts that may plague us. Cover us with a blanket of honesty, patience, and understanding. Bless this meeting today, all those present, and the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Doughty. Roll call, please.
Good afternoon, Bernstein.
Here.
Cardenas.
Here.
Dickerson. Dix. Doughty.
Here.
Green.
Chris.
Joseph. Cress. Moreno.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Throer.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Okay. Next item up on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the following meetings: the November 18th regular meeting, the November 18th Tampa Plan Amendment Meeting, public hearing, and the December 9th regular meeting. Is there a motion for approval? Commissioner Moreno made the motion. Commissioner Green seconded it. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor of the minutes as stated? Say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next up. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any items that are not on our agenda today, please come forward. Public comment? No public comment. We'll move on to item number three on our agenda: Presentation: Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department update. Welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ross Dickerson, and I'm the Environmental Land Manager for Hillsborough County. I have the pleasure of managing all of the nature preserves here in Hillsborough County that were acquired through the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program. And I'm getting to... All right. So, last time I was here, I was actually talking to everybody and asking for Commissioners to come and help us while we did our master plan, which is long gone. We're two separate departments now. We don't... We have a Parks and Recreation Department and the Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department, and I fall under the Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department. So I'm going to kind of give you an update on ELAP, how we're managing the current nature preserves out there. And then I'm going to go into the future. And luckily, this is only like a nine-hour presentation, so it should go pretty quickly. So like I said, I manage the Environmental Lands Management Section, and that... We manage the lands acquired through the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Program. And the purpose of our program is to acquire and preserve environmentally sensitive lands which protect wildlife, habitat, natural areas, drinking water sources, and water quality of rivers, lakes, and bays. And that's exactly what the citizens voted on back in 2008. So on the nature preserves, we focus a lot on ecological management and passive recreation. So you can see, we have hiking. Some of the most intense recreation we have are horseback riding. We do have a couple of BMX areas out there and one RC airfield. But mostly, we focus on passive recreation and managing nature in Hillsborough County. Our section currently manages over 63,000 acres. We are the number-one local preservation program in the state of Florida and probably the southeast United States, which Hillsborough County should be very proud of. We have 350 miles of security fence, 500 miles of fire lanes, 165 miles of trails. I hear a lot of people say we don't have trails out there. We have trails. Please come see us. We apply prescribed fire to 3,700 acres, and that actually, with an audit that we went through last year, is now we have a 9,200-acre-a-year requirement because of the habitats here in Hillsborough County, which is very difficult with all of the urban areas that are coming in. We do habitat restoration, and then we deal a lot with the urban interface, especially when it comes to wildland fire, and getting people to understand why we do fire right behind their homes to preserve nature. These are the main things that we do on our sites: habitat restoration, prescribed fire, exotic plant control, invasive animal control, and site security. And I'm just going to do a brief explanation of each. Habitat restoration, which is by far our favorite thing to do on the sites, is... We come in there and we either restore from the ground up, depending on what's there, or we restore from the tops down. So the first one, the ground-up method that we do, is upland seeding. And the picture on the bottom left is the best way to see what we do. We come in, we take old cattle pastures, and we return them to a biologically diverse ecosystem. This one has started off as a grassland, but we also have turkey oaks and sand pine coming in out there. And it's actually about 12 years old now, and it's a beautiful scrubby habitat. Sometimes, we have to work from the top down. This is an old pine flatwoods. Some of the easiest restoration that we ever have to do. We go down... We go in there, we knock down a whole bunch of trees, we burn it, and beautiful grasses and plants come back. Very simple, cheap restoration for Hillsborough County. And then other restoration are areas where there were cattle, and people would burn during the winter months, which promotes shrubby growth instead of herbaceous growth. And we get a lot of palmettos, which palmettos aren't bad, but sometimes they're too thick for the animals that live there. So we have to come in and mow it down, just like you would mow your yard, and then it comes back with a more diverse ecosystem for animals to live in. We do hydrological restoration from simple ones, like this one, which is a ditch block project at Lower Green Swamp, where we created an extra 130 acres of wetlands on the property when we filled in ditches that were put in by the previous landowner and the Army Corps of Engineers. To huge restorations where we actually have to replace things. This is stallion hammock at our Bomb Boyette Preserve. This is a creek system that was ditched during the phosphate mines and has been phosphate mines for the last 60 years. So we came in and we actually restored stallion hammock using the hydrocarving method, where we actually speed up time and pump water through the system. It creates its own creek system. And then we have a nice, natural... More natural system. I'm not going to say a natural system, but a natural system out there. This was a partnership with Swift Mud. Like I said, we do a lot of fire. It's important here in Hillsborough County for all of the habitats, from mangrove forest all the way up to scrub habitat. Everything is meant to burn in Florida. It maintains habitat for wildlife, it stimulates growth. A lot of the plants here in Hillsborough County cannot put out their seeds or bloom unless they have fire that goes through. Promotes species diversity, controls invasive plants, which is a huge issue we have. It controls insects and diseases. And the most important thing it does for our citizens is it reduces the chance of wildfire behind their homes. If we come in and do a prescribed fire, formerly known as controlled burns, but when you put fire on the ground, you're really not controlling it. You do your best, but they change to the prescribed fire. We are reducing that fuel buildup behind those homes that could cause a catastrophic event, like you see in California and unfortunately, Australia right now. This is some pictures to show that what we do. We have areas... Palmetto is a very oily plant, burns very hot. Picture in the top middle, you can see we are going right along houses. That's at our Bell Creek Nature Preserve, and that's a scrub, one of the hottest fires that you have to light here in Florida. And then after the fire rolls through, you can see it reduces the vegetation, it promotes flowers, and everybody's happy. Exotic plant species, I'm sure you all know about them. I'm sure you all have them in your yard, and you're probably dealing with them. But they grow aggressively. They cost us a lot of money on our nature preserves to control. They change fire ecology, and they actually alter native systems and drainage patterns. These are the major ones that we deal with: Old-world climbing fern, skunk vine, cogin grass, which is known as one of the top 10 invasives in the world. There's nothing that controls it. Brazilian pepper, some people call it Florida holly, and then Chinese tallow. Invasive animal control. I don't know if you ever received the complaints that our other Commissioners receive. We... Our hogs are usually getting out into people's property and ripping up their lawns. Nobody likes my hogs. And people are very disappointed when I tell them, and as soon as it crosses the fence, it's actually their hog, because that's what wildlife rules are. But we spend a lot of money and time focusing on animal control here in Hillsborough County. They are devastating, not only to natural habitat, but they'll come in and rip up all of our restoration areas. And then we also deal with the bottom right, which is a giant Argentine tegu. Those are out there. They can get up to about five and a half feet long, and they live and go for tortoise pearls. We catch them all the time, and they were released from the pet trade. Site security. Unfortunately, in certain times, we have people that choose to live on our properties, whether it be by... I shouldn't say choose, whether it be by choice or from circumstances. We do have vagrants on our property. We do have people dumping on our property, which causes invasives to go on our... To go get out of control on our property. And then we have lots of poaching on our property. People like to cut our fences, come in, build tree platforms, and shoot animals on the property. So those are all things we deal with. So now I'm going to go into the history of ELAP. Does everybody here know about ELAP? A little general idea about ELAP? Good. So ELAP was first brought to be by local response to rapid development back there in 1989. You can see where I put it on the bar, on the graph there. And the whole purpose was, because of rapid development, we needed to figure out a way to preserve lands that we had left. We did three referendums. The last one passed in 2008 during the recession, and we were very excited that almost 80% of the people voted. They wanted ELAP. They wanted us to charge them another $200 million to buy these properties. And it was named in honor of Jan K. Platt, who was, at the beginning, pushing for something like this. We tried to prioritize our acquisitions. We have over 63,000 acres of land, $262 million spent. Of that, 33%, $87.1 million was actually grant funding, which is great. We were able to buy more property. We have management agreements with Swift Mud, Tampa, Temple Terrace, and we do restoration projects with all of the major contributors around here: Swift Mud, Tampa Port Authority, and everyone else. Looking ahead. Nobody really has preservation in Hillsborough County on any state plans besides Hillsborough County. So we, at this point, are kind of on our own when it comes to preserving more land, which is great. The board just approved another $67 million for us to go out and buy more land in Hillsborough County. And the reason for it is because open space within the urban service area is pretty much going away. The remaining natural areas are going with it, and all of our nature preserves are being boxed in, which makes management of nature preserves very difficult. It has... It causes habitat fragmentation, invasive species come on our property. It really just causes a lot of issues for us when it comes to management. And this is one that I like to show. This is South County. I don't know if everybody's familiar with South County, but the red and green one is Bullfrog Creek Nature Preserve. Then we have our Bomb Scrub Preserve and our Bomb Boyette Preserve. So you're looking kind of at like 301 and the Boyette area. And you can see, back in 2002, there was plenty of upland space out there for animals to move through our preserves. And as we go through time, you can see in 2010 that the majority of the... A lot of those upland areas now have homes on them. And then when you come to now, all of those upland areas have homes on them. So all of those corridors that used to go back and forth between our properties are gone. And I'm not saying development is bad, and we didn't... We always had the chance to buy it. But it... All of that... All of the opportunities in that area are gone, and we need to refocus our program on how we're going to buy these properties. Because back in 2002, it's... That'll never sell. There'll never be houses there, and now there are. So moving forward, there's a lot of words on this screen, but I put in bold the ones that are important. We're trying to show that natural areas are critical assets to Hillsborough County, which they are. They enhance our quality life, and they provide us with ecosystem services. We revised our program to focus on connection... Connecting corridors here in Hillsborough County. And we did a study with the University of Florida to show those corridors. And we need to focus this preservation, because over the last 34 years, we did a great job buying property, and we need to make sure that we protect those assets so that they can be managed into the future without being damaged. So real quick, the ecosystem services project. We worked on this with the EPA. The EPA actually developed the ecosystem services model for the Tampa Bay region, so we really filled into the golden pot when we got to work with them. What are ecosystem services? It's anything that nature provides to us: fresh air, drinking water, that wolf spider that you tell your family that you don't want to kill because it eats bugs, and then you get a picture of it showing that you have proof. And then water retention and aquifer recharge. Very important things to us. And why are they important? Because we are part of the ecosystem. You can't say... You can't say that you're not part of the ecosystem. You depend on the ecosystem to survive, and it's important that we keep those services. So ELAP went out and we did a study, and we found that every year, our ELAP preserves are providing almost $100 million in ecosystem services to the citizens of Hillsborough County. So when you take the under $300 million that we spent on these properties, our return on investment is every two and a half years that we're getting our money back for ELAP properties. Then we went through, and we did the revision to the site ranking process. And again, lots of words, and I hate words on slides, so I put in bold the ones that are critical. Identify critical ecological corridors. Identify critical upland wildlife corridors and purchase within the next two to five years. Focus on the upland sites where riverine connections are either absent or not substantial. And then upland connections. Everything here has a theme. Where you're trying to connect all these lands, not just for animals, but for people to move through, but mainly for that ecological services that they're providing and we need to sustain. And again, we are not on the map, but we did make some great connections here already in Hillsborough County that connect to lands outside of Hillsborough County. And I can talk to you about them another day if you want to, but we have some... We have... We do connect to other lands. So we wanted to take those lands on that prior map, which was developed by the University of Florida for the state of Florida, which is the CLIP model, the Conservation Lands Model. And they had a person named Dr. Hockter look at the state of Florida and identify those last ecological corridors for the state. And as I mentioned, Hillsborough County was not on the map. So we asked Dr. Hockter to come to Hillsborough County and do the same thing for us, but to focus on what we have left and how we can connect into that broader network. So they did modeling on focal species habitat, which are your species that you want to focus on to show that you're managing properties well. Riparian and xeric connectivity, so those are your riverine and your upland connections. Aquifer recharge. We all want to keep our fresh drinking water here in Hillsborough County. And then rare species. We have species here in Hillsborough County that you don't find anywhere else in the state of Florida, and we need to make sure that we keep them here. So as I go through these last... So as I go through these last slides, I just want to point out that the darker the area on the map to the right, the more important it is. And you're going to start to see a theme throughout Hillsborough County. So surface water priorities, what are those areas that we have to protect so that all of our runoff has a place to go before it goes into the river systems? Northeast Hillsborough County, East Hillsborough County, South and Southeast Hillsborough County are very important areas. Aquifer recharge, Hillsborough County is a very porous county, which we know from sinkholes and other issues that we see every once in a while. But our water goes down pretty quick. We have sandy soils that charge the aquifer. So this map shows how important pretty much everything is in Hillsborough County. Biodiversity resource map, if we want to keep special species and we want other species to flourish in Hillsborough County, where are the spots that they're likely to be? And again, east, northeast, southeast Hillsborough County, and a little northwest. Landscape resources, what are those last remaining large tracts of contiguous habitat that we can purchase to make sure that we keep that resilient ecological corridors? And you can see the squiggly lines are because we do a really good job in Hillsborough County protecting wetlands. So all of those wetlands are nicely intact. So those are all the riverine systems and rivers associated with Little Manatee, Alephaya, Blackwater, and Itchybackasassa Creek. And then our rare species, like I talked about, we do have, we do actually still have scrub jays here in Hillsborough County. Not many of them, but we do have some, we have pitcher plants, we have burrowing owls. We have orchids that only come up after you put a fire through, and then they'll be there for two weeks, and then they're gone again. And we don't even know they're there until we burn something. We have very unique species here in Hillsborough County, and we want to make sure we protect them. And again, the reason it's so squiggly in southeast Hillsborough County is because a lot of species live in those riparian systems. So they're very important for us to protect. So we took all of this information from Dr. Hockter, and we put together a map. And this is the priority acquisition map that's been approved by the board that we created in October. And these are those properties, after looking at all the data, that we should focus on protecting to make those last remaining corridors here in Hillsborough County. So we didn't take anything off the list, but you can see in the black hashed mark that we are focusing on those corridors through Little Manatee River, Alephaya River, Blackwater Creek, Cypress Creek, and all of those systems to allow for those wildlife and people movement through the county. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Doughty?
Yeah, well, I've got a bunch, and I can go through and whatever, I'll, I can start, and other people can pick up. Thank you, Ross. Very, very pleased to see this. As a lot of you commissioners know, I, I kind of talked about this a couple of meetings ago. And as Ross mentioned, he had a slide that showed the Florida Wildlife Corridor, and I had seen a presentation on the Florida Wildlife Corridor a while back. And it described how the wildlife that likes to flow from southern part of the state to the northern part of the state can't always do so, because a lot of the connections have been severed. And I got very interested in what, what Ross is doing to try to have the corridors in Hillsborough County and connect up to that wildlife system. So there were a number of things that Ross brought up in his presentation today, and I'd like to, to talk about them a little bit and see how we might be able to assist in, in making, in making those connections happen. And the, the first one, his, his last slide was showing the, the priority parcels for purchase. And I wanted to know, this might be, Sean may be able to answer some of these questions, what, what tools we might have in our comprehensive plan that support his goal of connecting those corridors? And if there is anything that we can do that should his money stream not be fluid enough that we can preserve some of those areas until the money stream gets there so that he can purchase them, that sort of thing? So that's, that's my first question.
Commissioners, I'm Sean College with planning commission staff. There is, there are a number of policies in the comprehensive plan that have been there for some time that do work in concert with a number of things that Mr. Dickerson mentioned. There are at least two policies on shoreline and riverine corridor, wildlife corridors, and that they're important and need to be preserved. There is at least one policy actually specifically talking about that when natural areas are acquired, that we should look at these connections. So that works completely in concert with what he's doing. And finally, there is a policy talking about that in the development review process, development reviewers should be looking at preserving effective wildlife corridors in new developments. So the, the framework is there. Some ideas for how we can continue to work in concert. I know there is already a transfer of development rights enumerated in the comprehensive plan. It hasn't been a program that has been really worked very well. There's a number of difficulties in making that work. I understand it is something we're going to be looking at in the near future to see if that could be strengthened. And I know some of the board of county commissioners wanted us to look at that. So that will be investigated by the board of county commissioners and the planning commission staff, working with county staff. So that's one of the opportunities that we could look at.
Okay, thanks, Sean. You, we don't have anything that specifically, well, this might go back to Ross. The areas that you've identified as connectivity that you still haven't purchased, those areas are not designated significant wildlife habitat, or are they?
I would have to review the map to see, because some of the areas could be designated as that, yes.
Do we have, and this might go back to Sean, do we have the ability through the study that University of Florida did to maybe name some of those areas? Or, you know, to, is there a process by which we could get them designated as significant wildlife habitat?
We probably couldn't do that, the way the program is set up right now. Mr. Gross of county staff administers that program, but, but I'm very familiar with it. I've worked with it, you know, all my career in terms of the comprehensive plan. That program was set up many, many years ago, and there's a specific scientific basis for how lands were designated significant wildlife habitat. They have to have a certain threshold of acreage. It might be 75 acres, I don't recall exactly. And then you have to be able to draw a certain radius circle within it. So it can't be a long, thin area. And there is, there is environmental reasons for that, that you, that there's science behind that to say that you need that type of configuration to support a certain diversity of wildlife. And that's the basis for the program and for the designation of areas. So they're not really, there's not really a scientific basis for designating new lands unless they meet certain thresholds of environmental sensitivity and, and natural areas.
Okay, perhaps, perhaps we can come up with significant wildlife habitat, light, or something else. Call it something else, but, but, but still try to protect it. Because like Ross said, I mean, if, if, if our wildlife can't migrate from one area to another area, we're going to end up losing some of it. So that's, that's, that's one of the issue, and it may be, is there a way to, or maybe we need to be having a discussion with our code folks to try to incorporate some more of this language in? Okay. I want to go to the, my second, my second idea. And I didn't see it in the University of Florida study, actually, or the information that you provided. Are there areas that would have been on his study if they hadn't been built upon? You know, like a broken connection that might be really important?
Right, the, so the model did not take into account current land development, future land development, or anything like that. So it, it modeled everything as it is today, I guess. So we did actually have to go out and do a lot of ground truthing and everything, because we had all that data. So we went around areas that have already been developed when we created our corridor map.
Okay, I'm curious not to, you have, you have plenty of work already on your plate. I'm wondering if there might be a need for another study to try to determine if there are critical areas, not just, just to do it to do it, but critical areas that have been severed in the past 20 some odd years or so that perhaps could be reconnected with, well, I mean, with a, with a wildlife corridor, an overpass or what have you, that would allow wildlife to traverse that area when and if, if the roads improved or if an area is redeveloped, or something along those lines. Not to force, you know, a taking of anything, but to, to actually, when the redevelopment occurs, as it will eventually, that we can replace those broken corridors.
That, that would be helpful, and I, I researched on fish and wildlife. So the state has a rule that if there's any proposed new roads or enhancements to roads, like you're saying, where you double up, make them wider, it has to be reviewed by fish and wildlife staff to see if a corridor connection is valid at that point. So any spots where it's going through there, identified future preservation or current preservation, they review every single road that comes through to see if an overpass is necessary. And they say it's much cheaper to do it at the beginning, at the PDE study, rather than in the future, because it gets a lot more expensive that way. So they, they, the state does have a process for that. And I also found a study that was done by the Department of Transportation. They actually looked at the I-4 corridor through Hillsborough County and found one valid spot for a, a true wildlife connection.
It might be the same spot on the Florida Wildlife Corridor?
It, it could be, it's in eastern Hillsborough County, near the English Creek area.
Where it gets, it gets very narrow, the Florida Wildlife Corridor gets really narrow. Okay, I have several more, but I don't know.
Yeah, let her go, we'll come back. Commissioner Doughty?
Thank you. My conversation was going to be kind of the same flavor. Whatever you can do to overlay your maps on proposed development labs, maps, and have the staff make sure that it's brought to everyone's attention, that this is on your prioritize list, top 10, or, you know, whatever that would be, would be really helpful. I'm also fascinated by the Florida Wildlife Corridor, and those roads get kind of scary to cross. And then I was at a presentation last week from Pasco County, and they said 22% of Pasco County land was protected. I was curious if you knew what that percentage was for Hillsborough County?
I, the percentage was in the twenties, but I can't remember exactly what it was. And that's great to hear that Pasco County has that much. I didn't know they had that much land.
Yeah, you know, and their ELAP program has focused on wildlife corridors for a long time, which makes complete sense. So thanks for all your good work, and hopefully we can have more information on this fed to us through kind of all the proposed development.
Anything like Commissioner Dex?
Yep.
I have 18 points I'd like to establish.
Go for it.
Just one, Mr. Dickerson, did I understand you correctly that county commission has allocated $50 million to continue the purchase of some properties?
It's, it's actually 67 million. I think they approved 75, but after you pay taxes and stuff, it came down to 67, but yes.
Perfect. So in a real quick nutshell, I mean, not to belabor the point, but I'm just curious. What is the established procedure? It sounds like you're the guy in charge, which is great, I'm glad to meet you. What is the established procedure that you go through to identify and prioritize properties that will meet the criteria for your purchase? And how do you, how do you rank those?
We have, so we just changed everything this year. So in the past, sites would be nominated to our program, anybody could nominate them, they would go through a review process, and we would look at seven different criteria to see if we would purchase it, and it would be considered a class A, B, C, or D site. Now, the criteria has changed slightly to focus more on critical upland connections. And they're ranked as substantially acquired, important, and desired. So now we have a smaller group of, and in those groups, you can only have a certain amount of sites. So the, the most important are what we consider our essential sites, and we're working through those as we purchase more properties. So we currently have, I think we currently have $15 million worth of projects we're looking at right now.
15 or 50?
15.
So, so once you identify these, then, and you rank them, then, then you're the guy that goes out and speaks to the landowner and tries to negotiate that?
That's actually Kirk Gremlie, he's the ELAP Acquisition Manager, he does all of that work. I get to go out and look at the trees.
And the turnaround time, provided the owner is, you know, fine with it, should be relatively quick as far as closing?
It is.
Not as far as your, I don't want to use the word development, but you really are developing, you're developing in a, in a sustainable way. But that comes along later. Is that 65 million all allocated for purchase, or is some of that for the development of some of those properties?
There is a small portion, we, we haven't set a percentage, but we can use a small portion for those capital improvements when we buy the property. So restoration, public access points, we can use the bond funds for that, too.
And, and I ask that because over in northeastern Hillsborough County, we have large parcels of property.
Yes.
But those have kind of sat fallow for, for several years. So that's why I'm wondering about when they'll be nurtured.
Well, are you referring to Lower Green Swamp? Off of Knights Griffin?
Off of Knights Griffin, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we actually have almost 20 miles of trails out there. We have an office, we have a trailhead, we have lots of facilities out there.
Cool.
Yeah. But there are some that are managed by the city of Plant City, like McIntosh and those properties, that there's still some work to be done as well out there.
Yeah, yeah. And they're doing theirs.
They are, they're doing a great job.
They're getting that going, but I was just wondering about the ELAP properties. Great, thanks.
Okay, any other commissioners before I go back to Commissioner Doughty? Commissioner Doughty?
Of my 16 that I have left, yeah. Yeah, and I have, I have a couple more. The, the next issue that I want to talk about, you, you brought up fire and burning, the prescribed burns that you have to do on, on the properties, and showed that one slide about all the development that came right up to your, to your property boundaries. And you noted that that's a bit of a difficulty, proposes a difficulty for you. Could you possibly just expound a little bit on what procedures you have to go through and the, the concerns, I guess, that you, that you have with prescribed burns up against development that has occurred since you owned the property?
So we, we take as much precaution as we can when we go into these areas to burn. We put in what's known as a fire lane, a fire break between us and the adjacent property, where we try to get it down to mineral soil because mineral soil won't burn. And we do our best to get those in there. The biggest issues we have, maybe, and they could maybe be addressed in future developments, is when a developer comes in and wants to build next to a private house, there's a certain buffer that they have to stick to. As far as we can tell, there's no buffer for nature preserves. So sometimes, and we do talk to developers and they try their best, but sometimes we have homes that are built within 50, 60 feet of our property line that has a scrub habitat on it. And if we can't get in to burn it, it's going to burn at some point, and we always worry that people might be, not be safe. So that's, that's really the biggest concern that we have with new developments that come in.
Okay, do you have, you have restrictions on yourself as far as smoke and that sort of stuff, for, for timing and?
We do, and with all the new developments going around our properties, it's harder and harder to burn because we're not, we are allowed to put smoke on whoever we want, but we know that we wouldn't be good neighbors if we did that. So we do our best to keep the smoke in the site as much as possible. But as, as we get surrounded, you've run out of different, you've run out of options for winds to burn on, because either, no matter what direction you burn, you're going to put smoke on homes.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm thinking that this is another potential code issue, though, that it's one thing if you preserve an area adjacent to existing development, it's another when development comes in after the preserve is already there. And so basically, you can't say that I didn't know that you had to manage this piece of property before. So I'm thinking if, if the other two items that I had as far as the available connectivity and trying to preserve the land until it can be purchased, or, or something along those lines, and broken connectivity to fix, this might be something to work with Joe, or, you know, to, to try and come up with a way to make, to make it, to inform those properties that are adjacent that there might be some restriction placed upon them, whether they have to fireproof their homes, you know, to take into account the, the procedures that you're going to be going through in order not to place the burdens upon your department, but to take precautions of their own.
I'm a, I'm a big supporter of firewise communities and something called defendable space, which is that area between your home and the wildland urban interface, the woods, that is defendable. And there's different guides out there where depending on what habitat is next to you, you should have habitat is next to you, you should have this much space, or this much space, so that that fire has least amount of chance to get to your home. And we do have what's called a compatibility plan, that goes out for any property that's within 1,000, any development that's coming in within 1,000 feet of an ELAP preserve, they have to fill out what's called a compatibility plan, where it talks about our right to burn, and that we may have to put smoke on their house, it talks about invasive plants, and what they are, and are not allowed to plant within that area, so there are some things that we currently do have on the books.
And maybe we can beef that up a little bit, maybe, okay, yeah, Sean, please, if you could speak to it.
Yes, I would, this is a very important issue, it affects life and property, potentially. I would point out that there is guidance, again, in the Conference of Plan already with regard to this, in terms of preventing incompatible development activities adjacent to publicly owned lands and natural preserves, that is in the comp plan, and that the county shall protect these areas from adverse impacts attributable to adjacent development land uses. So the structure is there, but as you say, and Mr. Dickerson says, I'm not sure that there's anything in the code to set back buildings or structures from the natural areas, and analogous to this is there are wetland setbacks in the code. Buildings, homes, have to be set back a certain distance from wetlands, presumably to protect the integrity of the wildlife habitat and the water quality, but I'm not sure there's one to protect life and property from, from burning that is going to occur naturally, if not prescribed, on these sites, so that, again, I think the structure might be there in the comp plan, but we may need to explore opportunities in the code.
Okay, thanks, Sean, and then, that actually brings me to my last one, my last point in this thing, and Sean, I believe, had talked about transfer of development rights before, and we were talking about buffers, and that sort of thing, and I'm curious about, I mean, there are, there are buffers between adjacent land uses, there's, you know, a type A buffer, a type E buffer, there's all these things, we have to plant hedges, we have to do all these things if you're going to do a development, but there really isn't anything in any of those buffers that I can recall that says there ought to be a provision for these, a smaller wildlife corridor as development grows. I mean, I know the county's trying to put together a trail system for people to, you know, hike and bike, and connect basically throughout the county, so you don't have to, like, I mean, out where I am, I mean, I can ride a sidewalk for, you know, 100 feet, and then I got to get on the road, or ride a grass for another 200, and then there might be another small stretch of sidewalk, but, I mean, there's, there's no contiguous path for me to do, so I'm curious about whether some kind of language towards wildlife corridors can be incorporated into that buffering system, based upon some preferences, based upon, you know, some study that still may need to be done, to determine where things are, and, and again, I'm not trying to take away any, any, well, any development right, that anybody may have on their property, but I would, if it's important for a corridor to be on one side of the property versus another side of the property, can we shift and transfer, allow maybe a more, a more dense development on their property to preserve that area, or transfer the rights to another portion of the county, so that there's no monetary loss associated with it, and I'm not sure that you can answer that, that might be something that we can do here, and I'm, well, I mean, I'll go in there, I would, I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission reach out to our code enforcement people, and at least initiate these discussions, and work towards trying to, trying to find methods that these issues can be addressed as, as quick as possible, I'm not really sure how to word that appropriately, but I would like us to be, at a minimum, having the discussion, at a maximum, solving some of this.
With the, if I might, with the, like, the zoning land development code, folks?
Yep.
Okay, I think that's different than code enforcement, so just.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I said that wrong.
Yeah, make sure we're clear, yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to work on, on that, see what we can bring back.
Okay.
We got a motion by Commissioner Doughty, second by Commissioner Green, any discussion on that motion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you, Ross.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, we are going to move on to item number four on our agenda, which is the Procedures Manual Update, welcome. Jennifer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission's staff. I don't have a presentation for you today, but this is the Procedures Manual Update, you might remember, I briefed you on it last, in December, we're moving towards a Procedures Manual for the jurisdiction, so the city of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City will have their own Procedures Manual, Hillsborough County is still working on theirs, so you will see that shortly, in your packet, we have a redesigned Procedures Manual, which I have to give credit to Caroline Charles, with our, with our public relations and community coordination team, who, who did a great job helping me on that, but I'm here to, next we will transmit this to the cities, and each city council will adopt the manual after, after the motion is made here, so I can answer any questions.
Any, any public comment on this item, before we take questions from Commissioners? Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jennifer, can you, I'm sorry, can you just, can you clarify that process for, for bringing the manual before us, would be month, two months, six months from now, or?
Oh, for the, for the Hillsborough County manual, that you'll see next?
Yes.
Yes, so, actually, I might defer to Melissa Ornida, she knows a little bit more about that process than I do, right, at this point.
Sure, so, so this manual will be for the three cities, they each will adopt it, we've been working on the county's manual, there are a couple of things about how the county handles processing plan amendments that are a little different from the cities, so that's why we thought it'd be easier to carve theirs off, and hopefully, we'd be able to bring that back, if not next month, by March, for you to look at that, that one. And then, it would go same process, then, once it is, you all make a recommendation on it, then it's transmitted to the County Commission to approve.
All right, the potential for adoption is six months from now?
Hopefully, not that long, I mean, and this is just, again, the manual that governs how we do plan amendments, and, and mostly, we've been trying to streamline the process, so hopefully, that would go very smoothly with the Board of County Commissioners, but, so hopefully, not six months.
Well, well, good, let's hope, streamline, streamline the process, and streamlining getting it into, you know, to work, let's say, I think is, is good, good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Commissioners? Someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the Procedures Manual for cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City, and forward the manual to respective municipalities for adoption.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Marina, second by Commissioner Green, any further discussion? Commissioner Bernstein, do you have a question, or, okay, no further discussion, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We are going to move on to item number five, city of Tampa, Land Development Code Text Amendments.
Jennifer Malone, again, with your Planning Commission's staff, I will open up our city of Tampa Land Development Code Text Amendments, this will also look familiar to you, because you saw these in December, at your December meeting, but we kind of put a little placeholder on it, and so we're going to finish them up today, we do have city of Tampa staff here to answer any questions, and we will be taking these amendment, there's each resolution for each Land Development Code Amendment, so the first one was billboards, you guys had some questions regarding settlement agreement, there was a question about how this would affect a billboard with more than one signed face, and it's just a reminder, the Planning Commission staff did find this consistent, and I will open it up for questions in the city of Tampa.
Okay, is the applicant here, would like, would the applicant like to speak on this?
With respect, Mr. Chairman, maybe it might be best after we hear from the city.
Okay, yep.
Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue.
Does the city of Tampa have any comment on this? City of Tampa?
202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg.
Catherine Coyle, city of Tampa, Catherine Coyle, city of Tampa Planning and Urban Design, actually, the city doesn't do a presentation, we're simply here for questions, this is a privately initiated amendment, so I'm here for any questions.
So, back to the applicant.
Okay, I'm back, thank you. Mr. Chairman and board members, again, Todd Press for the record, I hear Tom O'Neill, who is with Clear Channel, I'll begin by telling you that this program has been in effect for over 10 years, and it has been a phenomenally successful city and county partnership, that has worked beautifully, so you have before you the test of time, what we're seeking to do with this submittal is a slight enhancement to an ongoing, successful program, and that test of time has been about 10 years in the city of Tampa, but virtually the same type of program and project has been ongoing in many jurisdictions, city of St. Petersburg, and pretty much in the same manner, city of St. Petersburg, city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Pasco County, Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, so it's throughout the Bay Area, and over the years, we've come back, and we've tweaked and changed the program of the projects, as it, as has been successful, and moved through, but we're very proud that in all those jurisdictions, including the city of Tampa, we have never received a single complaint that we're aware of, on the changeover to digital billboards, and that's what this is about, this is to allow a slight enhancement of a few more boards on a few additional streets in the county, as we, or, excuse me, in the city, as we have done in other jurisdictions. So in the past, in the city of Tampa, so far, this program has removed 13 structures and 32,500 square feet of paper billboards, none of the rules, none of the regulations are changing, same template, same details, the only thing that's changing is we're asking to allow a few more of the digital boards, and every time a digital board is permitted, then a factor of 10 in paper boards has to come down, so you've seen a lot of billboards disappearing, that's because of this program, so if I could go to a few slides here, if I may. Oh, you're going to bring it up, thank you. Thank you, sir, so is that up for you, Will? Okay, so as you can see, this was just one example of many, many, this was existing and gone, many of those multiples have to be removed, paper boards have to be removed for one digital, there's a very interesting and important public element to these boards, and that is that they're engaged with all levels of law enforcement, and this began with probably the most heinous crime in Tampa Bay, which was the Rogers family, mother and daughters, who were taken out of boat and murdered, and was only through County Commissioner Barbara Sheen Todd, who put the handwriting up of the murderer, in these boards that you see here, that that gentleman was caught, that has mushroomed into the FBI, city of Tampa police, Hillsborough County Sheriff, federal marshal, in fact, at this point, when there's public emergencies, they automatically take over the boards, and they've done that on a number of critical public service involvements, they were selected in 2011 by then Chief Castor, as their Business Partner of the Year, for their involvement and their work, but it extends more than that, extends into all types and all elements of city of Tampa programs, projects, citizens as well, some you can see here, you can see the many programs that they're happy to participate throughout the year, downtown Tampa's waiting for the police, leadership conferences, extends into all types of areas and all types of programs and projects, and as indicated at the last meeting, the best thing, business-wise, that's worked with the boards, is that for the first time, it's let small business in, so rather than having to go out and purchase a huge art piece of paper, that has to be designed, and printed in pieces, and put up by hand, obviously, it's almost instantaneous, small business can advertise for a day, or two days, or in certain locations, and these are just a few of the small businesses that are involved with digital programming now, this is an example, the Alert Systems Partnership I referred to, which includes Amber Alerts, Missing Exploited Children, FDLE, FOAA, all of them have immediate control, and these are just some further examples, so, there were some, there were some discussions, or some questions about specific streets at the last meeting, and what I'd like to put up on this device, if I may, we can pull that up, please? Do I have to do something here for that? Okay, there we go, so, after appearing before Tampa City Council, and they had raised some concerns, just specifically about a few streets, and a few of those questions came up here, and Tom, make sure I get this right, what is blue, and I see the colors are not coming up here, well, on the, okay, yeah, we'll hand out the sheet, because the overhead is not picking up the colors for you, how do I put the light on? Oh, they're right there, turn that, it's coming up a little bit, let me see here, so we're handing this out to you, let me make sure that you all have it, so I can walk you through the few tweaks of the streets.
Okay.
See, this is a well-trained client, isn't he, I got him handing out all the documents? I told him to wear a short skirt today, but he refused, so, the blue street, the blue indications are currently where digital signs are allowed, and there's a ton, Ms. Chairman and board members, there's a ton of restrictions, distance from residential, distance from other signs, it's really difficult to find a spot, it can only be on these major roadways, and then there's all kinds of setbacks, regulations from residential, non-residential streets, from other signs, there's a whole layer that's worked very well, again, we have the test of time of those rules, none of those are changing, so, the red, which is here, and here, and here, were previously proposed to allow digital, that's changed, what's been removed is this area here on Dale Mayberry, and this area here in Seminole Heights, so that's in response to feedback that we've gotten, I have to say that Clear Channel's always been great to work with the cities and counties, they're always very malleable, listen, to see how we can move forward together, so those changes have already been made, Tom, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I'll say again, that it's been a great program, we've worked with over 10 years, great city-county partnership, again, we're very closely listening to concerns of the public, and have made some changes already, so we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, actually, before we take any questions, any public comment on this item? Okay, no public comment, any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Marina?
Thank you, I guess I have two questions, so I had one of the questions about the roadway, so the first one, the, the conflict that I had was, so, you know, what we're looking at, this, the July 2019 text amendment cycle, under definitions, the, the part, or bullet D, I guess, Dale Mayberry from Hillsborough to Kennedy, and from Gandy to McDill, so on the map that you gave us, on, on Dale Mayberry from Hillsborough to Kennedy, so you've highlighted that as blue and red, but later on, in the same section, it indicates any roadway which is located within the West Shore Overlay Commercial District shall not be considered, with the exception of Memorial, the Veterans, and 275, and then, from the Gandy to McDill part, you've, that's now, that's crossed out on this map, so, I guess that's my, it, it seems as if there's one conflict with part D of what the, what the new code would indicate versus what is also in the code for the overlay, and part two is what's indicated here is in conflict with the map, unless I'm reading it wrong.
Tom O'Neill, 5555 Almerton Road, Clearwater 33760. Tom O'Neil, 5555 Almerton Road, Clearwater, 33760. Again, this is pared down after both the Planning Commission and the council meetings. And the overlay districts will always take precedent, except for existing billboards. The... There's currently boards out on 275 in the Westshore District, and that was because the interstate was allowed. So this basically is doing the same process to allow inside of that district. Again, the district will always be... In lieu of a rule change, the district will apply. Let's leave it at that. Yep.
Correct. Which is... So that goes back to the question I had in our previous meeting of if the overlay takes... You know, if the overlay is the override, so to speak, then why does it need to be even in the designated roadways?
Well, it's so we're not gerrymandering the map, to be perfectly honest, because there are parts of it that are not in that overlay district, if that makes sense.
Okay. Yeah. And so then, for that, then, except... Exception, or is that referring to, say, like, the property where the Yankees complex is, where there's a billboard?
Yes. Actually, that's a great caveat within the previous agreement. On... The only place we were allowed to go on Dale Mayberry was HCC, or the airport property, or the Tampa Sports Authority property. So that was the previous caveat that was put in there. So... And there are no billboards in that strip right now because of proximity to the runways. So TIA and FAA kind of overruled. We actually tried to work with the Bucks to put in three back-to-back-to-back on there. We had three billboards on the Bucks property there, the stadium property, and were kind of turned down within the ordinance because of the FAA and TIA indicating the runway. So there are stopgaps inside of this program.
All right. I guess I'm still confused as to why, you know, that portion, but just for the sake of time, I want to move on from that. And then the last point. Gandy Boulevard from Dale Mayberry to Westshore, the Selman West Extension, I think is the official title of it, that is being built in that corridor.
Yes.
So are the billboards there, are those going to be built to the standard in which they are visible to someone who is on that upper deck? And then if so, what considerations are there for, you know, sort of the light penetration into the neighborhood, both north and south of that corridor?
Great question. I didn't mean to cut you off, but you'll notice that in the... And again, this is a result of your questions at the last meeting. So we changed that to read, "Digital faces must be elevated and positioned to read to the top deck of the Gandy Extension only and shielded from neighborhood views." The good thing is, as Mr. Pressman indicated, it's 10 years ongoing. We haven't aggravated anybody, you know, without a single planer had the neighborhoods come out, because we know where to put them and where not to. And on Gandy, clearly, what we're going to do is have... And there are, within the current ordinance, there are shielding and shading mechanisms that are in place, that you could actually go to a neighbor and say, you know, if we are within 300 feet of view, can we block this with a tree or angling the sign? So there's things in the current ordinance, as Mr. Pressman indicated. There's a lot of stopgap measures from that. But we're going to address that specific run from the extension, as you mentioned, all the way to Westshore, so that we're not reaching any homes. There are some of the... You had asked how some of those are already at a height that can be seen from the top deck, and some of those will have to be adjusted for that.
Can I just... So last... Sorry, last point. So then, question for the Chair. We are not voting on what is in our agenda. We are voting for this document.
Yeah, I'll let Melissa answer it.
That's at your discretion? If you feel that these changes address some of your concerns, it's a privately initiated amendment. They have brought forward these changes. I would just be clear in your motion which version you are considering as attached to your resolution.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two questions back in December when we took this issue up. The first one had to do with the definition of a billboard sign or face. And I was curious, because a lot of the billboards now have two faces. So is this... And if this proposed amendment is... Or rather, how is this amendment going to reflect that condition where billboard, billboard that you're putting up, let's say, has two faces?
Yes. Some billboards have one face. Most of them have two faces. And then, again, this is about square footage, so you have to remove a certain component of existing signs to allow a face to be converted. So in essence, you could convert an entire sign or both faces, but you would be required to remove twice the square footage.
Okay. And it's... I just want to be clear, and is that taking up on, in this item, limits on total number of signed faces that may upgrade to electronic billboard signs?
It'll have no bearing, because in the existing ordinance, it calls for that per sign face, as does the change. So each side is a face. So it's in the current ordinance and the code to reflect that if you are to convert the whole sign, you would have to do double the square footage. So that would have been redundant to put that in here, because it's in both the code and the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And the other question I had was, some of these digital boards now will have solar panels?
Well, solar and digital doesn't work yet, because it's... There's way too much power required to utilize solar. Solar is... Some of our competitors use them in rural...
Just for general light, just for general...
...that can't get to it. It may be part of the future where solar can, but currently, there's too much power required for solar to work. But it is something that's part of the billboard. Lamar, which is one of our competitors, has 10%, but they are in rural markets where you don't have power lines in every location. So they, you know, they install a solar facility on the roof of the sign or the top of the sign to feed that.
Okay. The reason I bring up the issue, because, of course, it is possible in the future that some of these may be upgraded to, you know, to that at some point, let's say. But how is that reflected in the overall size of the sign itself?
The solar aspect?
Yeah.
Not really. Again, it's not really... It's not a major part of the Tampa market, because we have the ability to drag power in. It certainly... I mean, you've got an outlay, you know, a cost to put the solar in, so it would be a last gap measure. It would not be something that you would do for digital.
Okay.
It's just not part of the monetization of that deal. So maybe in the future. You never know. Technology may get us there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When you were before us at our last board meeting, this, if I recall correctly, was coming before us in part because of a settlement agreement. And at the time, staff wasn't available to answer questions about the settlement agreement that you have with the city. And my question at that point, or back then, and I still have it now, is what's been proposed before us as a part of that settlement agreement? If it's... If there's agreements that have already been in place and agreed upon with the City of Tampa, are we kind of by default obligated to just approve this, because there is, you know, a contract that's already, you know, something's already been negotiated?
Catherine Coyle, City of Tampa. Just to be brief, the settlement agreement was put through in a resolution in 2008. So that's done. And the settlement agreement with the two largest companies in Tampa, Clear Channel being one of them, that covers the replacement requirements for static signs. And in those settlement agreements, it contemplates upgrades to digital. But it says very clearly that if you're going to upgrade to digital, the city's going to adopt a regulation to do that. That is not part of the settlement agreement. So then, after those settlement agreements were done, we adopted this ordinance that handles digital. So any amendment to this is purely a code requirement.
All right. That's my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the proposed text amendment as proposed by the petitioner and for Tampa City Council.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Moreno? Melissa?
Just to be clear, the version that was handed out today?
Okay. Yep. Got a motion by Commissioner Moreno? Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bernstein has seconded it. Any further discussion before we vote? No further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to the next item, which is the skateboard ramps.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. David Haywood, your Planning Commission staff. The next LDC amendment for your review dealt with changes, actually, the creation of regulations for skateboard ramps. They're proposed in Section 27-43 and 27-290.9. There were questions about the acclivity, excuse me, to portable skateboard ramps within, like, front yards and sides setbacks. You did have that presentation last month. Your staff did find the requests consistent as submitted. Staff is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Would staff like to speak on this? Or actually... Yeah, staff initiated.
Catherine Coyle, City of Tampa. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comment on this?
Good afternoon, Rod Hatch, 1013 East Patterson Street. May I turn this on, please? As a reminder. For the last year, my wife and I have experienced total loss of privacy in the back of our home, inside our kitchen, our backyard, due to a 700-square-foot structure. The City of Tampa, and I'm sure Hillsborough County, has spent probably millions of dollars on skateboard ramps, and skateboard parks, I should say, throughout the city, but did nothing to address the possible obtrusiveness of these structures in residential neighborhoods. This is a 700-square-foot structure over here. This is five feet high. The fence behind is six feet. And this is my house here. He built this with no consideration for the noise. Obviously, it's a giant amplifier. There's no insulation. He added noise enhancements with an embossed surface, hollow steel pipes, concrete pole coping. I've measured as high as 115 decibels from next to the structure, inside my house, from 70 up to 82. These are pictures inside my home. You can see them sitting on my fence. My fence is nine feet high. There is a three-foot-high retaining wall that runs along this fence. And because he didn't observe any setback requirements, that retaining wall is now failing. So now, every time it rains, my pole also turns black. He didn't mitigate any rainwater whatsoever. And again, this is my house. So they can actually look at... My wife and I look down, look in the pole, look in our backyard. You know, I tried to invite this individual over. He came over trying to get some empathy. Said, "Look, we have no privacy." He said, "You know, I'm gonna do what I want in my backyard. It's legal. Buy some curtains." So that's what I'm dealing with. So I hope the City of Tampa and Hillsborough County addresses this. In addition to me, there's other residents, too, and there's other of these structures that are now in the permit department right now. And these things are getting bigger. They want them big. Now, I have no problem with anyone doing what they want in their own backyard, but you have to respect the privacy of your adjacent property on Mrs. Walte. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does the City of Tampa want to respond at all before we take questions from Commissioners? Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. Well, the... I guess the first question I have, and this is for the city, this was at council on Thursday, and it was on consent, I think?
Catherine Coyle, City of Tampa. Yes, it was the first reading of the ordinance, just by title.
Okay.
It was in a public hearing.
Okay. So... But one of the things that the city staff had that we didn't have was, in the exhibit, they provided an example that kind of got to the question that I had, was that in one of the backups, they actually have a section of quarter pipes that they even say, like, you can just roll them back into the garage.
Right.
And so that was the question I had in the previous hearing, was that in looking at the way the code was, it was clearly written to prevent the worst of the worst. But by preventing the worst of the worst, it... To me, it seemed as if you... There was a window there for if you were doing something in your front driveway with a ramp or with a quarter pipe, that it seemed as if you're preventing something, you need to protect this other thing. And so I thought that was a good example of showing, look, these are... This is what could be okay. But then at council, there wasn't any discussion of that.
I actually did the research on it, and those pictures and the write-ups on those were actually from the research I did. And that was for the size part of it, because that's really what council was focused on, was size and placement on the property. The intent was not to capture those that are portable, although some of them do have wheels, like you said. We do have another provision in the code for display in commercial properties, where it's daily display, where you put stuff out. But it's very clear in the regulation that you have to pull it back in by the end of the day. I can look at including something like that, because our intent wasn't to capture the kid that wants to do it in his driveway.
Yeah.
So we have some similar language in the code already that I could look to insert. I can work with the... Through the legal department to make sure, if you wanted to include that in your recommendation.
Can I just follow? The concern I have comes from my own childhood. We had a basketball hoop in our driveway. Now, granted, we lived in a de-restricted neighborhood. But in that particular neighborhood, you were allowed to have a basketball hoop, as long as it's in the backyard and on pavement. So there was nothing that said you could have a hoop in your driveway. And we actually had that hoop vandalized multiple times. You had someone come in the middle of the night and pull it down. And it was a hoop that could be rolled in and out. So in looking at this, I thought of my own, you know, childhood, growing up, of if we want to encourage kids to have recreation, we want to make sure that if we're trying to prevent the worst of the worst from happening, that we can also allow the kid who can... They may leave that ramp up, you know, overnight, but it's not a permanent structure. And it's something that could be portable. So I don't know if it's... I mean, I'd hope it's something that doesn't need to be written to the code.
The intent...
And it could just be, I think, like Mr. Joseph brought up, you know, who's gonna enforce this? You know?
Well, I can tell you what the code enforcement process is. If... First of all, it's all neighborhood... It's complaint-driven. So it's not a proactive thing. If someone calls to complain, an enforcement officer will go and look at it. And if it violates this section, then they're given a notice of violation, and they're given 21 days to remove it. And then at the end of that 21 days, there's a second inspection. And if, on that second inspection, it's gone, it's closed out. That is a lot of the code enforcement cases that we have, because it's random things that just don't meet code, and somebody cleans it up. We have a lot of those with tire shops, for instance, that aren't allowed to keep their tires stacked. They move them, they get cleared out, and then over time, they get put back out and stacked out, and someone just forgets to put them back in. And next thing you know, it becomes a pyramid and some other display. It happens. Those are constant things. The intent of this was not to punish the 12-year-old kid who wants to skateboard. I have a basketball hoop, one of those portable ones, in my front yard. I've never been cited for it. It's not typical that they would do those kind of things. But we... I can look at making sure that that's covered, if that's something that's concerned.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, can I just follow? I don't want to make government bigger for the sake of making government bigger.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But I guess if... You know, I trust the city to do the right thing. And, I mean, you hear the cases of, like, the kids being told to do something, and the cops come by and, like, "These kids are playing. We're not gonna do anything about it." So, I mean, I kind of trust your professional ability to make sure that we're not just gonna pass something that gets a 12-year-old kid in trouble for skateboarding in his driveway. I mean, I trust the city.
Or maybe does stop the pack of 50 kids skateboarding in the street on a bunch of ramps they've assembled. See what I mean? There's a difference.
Yes. But that's a...
But that's up to the enforcement officers.
Yeah. Because that's a good example, though, because you could build a half-pipe out of two pieces you can roll in and out of a garage. That's not a permanent structure.
Right.
The way that, I mean... The way that, I mean, this gentleman built a deck in his backyard that just happened to have a skateboard ramp attached to it.
The issue that we have, the reason why these regulations came about, one is because of that particular case, but the current rules in our code, this is an accessory structure, just like a pool, just like a detached garage. The maximum height throughout the city is 15 feet, and then in certain districts like Seminole Heights, like historic districts, the maximum height is 22 and 1/2 feet. There's no other regulation that really stops or caps size, and so you've got this much bigger window, and that's why this thing got so big, because it was fitting under this much larger umbrella rule that we have. And that's when, especially when it caused issues, council really wanted us to look at and do that research to figure out, okay, what, you know, what's the normal size? What is reasonable, whether you put those two quarter pipes together at that size for someone to have in their garage or have in the backyard, in a 40-foot lot, a 50-foot lot, you know, within the city? It'd be different if you were out in the middle of nowhere. We do have more and more of these popping up, and right now, they're under our other rules, which are much, much larger, and a three-foot setback from sides and rear. So they get, they can get very big, and they can get very close to neighboring properties.
Can, sorry, just one more. So, so let's say, let's say we pass it today, and council passed it today, and then you have a situation later on where, you know, there, I know, it's a hypothetical, but there is a ramp in a driveway, and, you know, the neighbor, you know, someone says, you know, "You gotta, you gotta cut this out, it's too loud, it's 12 o'clock at night," whatever, and the kids just, you know, keep it in the driveway, because maybe there's enough space in the garage. So now, council has passed this, and they have an idea of sort of what is the portable version of this? So, does the, does, would the backup on an amendment like this be able to facilitate a code enforcement complaint to say that when council voted for this, they know what's the worst of the worst and this other idea? And this other idea is what this code complaint is about, so therefore, in order for the person being complained upon, in order them to meet the, you know, in order for them to clear, like what you said, that complaint, they just have to put it back in the garage and make sure that they're more diligent about putting it away?
It's difficult always to answer a hypothetical about something that's not real yet, but in general, I would say, you know, enforcement, they tend, they want to work with people. That's what they're trying for is compliance, ultimately. And if it's as easy as putting it away, then put it away. Put it in the back, roll it behind the fence if you can't put it in the garage. Just put it outside of the front yard. The cases that wind up usually making it are the ones that are repeat offenders, ones that don't, that keep failing inspections, ones that keep causing problems, because it's a lengthy process for code enforcement. That, I mean, that's all that I can say for that.
Commissioner Powell?
For the gentleman who has his issue with this new code, is this going to actually help, like, some with his problem? I mean, do these structures that are already existing, are they gonna have to fall and become into compliance with the new rules, or this is just for things that are going forward?
This particular one is actually in the process right now in permitting, so I would defer to the legal department if there is even an answer for that. Previously-built ones, if they don't comply with the current rules, they would be considered However, that is also with the caveat that they met the underlying rules, the previous rules. If someone just built it, and it's gigantic, it didn't meet the regular code, the current code today, then it's still in non-compliance. So, we don't, we don't know where they all are. Like I said, enforcement's complaint-driven. Sometimes we don't know where things are until someone actually calls in.
Sure. And another question is, in regards to the height for residential, it's three feet. Is that, what is that, three feet? Where is, like, that top level? Is that like the ramp, or is that the portion where someone can stand on, you know? What is that gonna be? Because my concern is, okay, you've got a three-foot-high, you know, structure, people around about five, almost six feet tall these days, you know, pretty average, so you're talking about someone nine feet up, and even if you have a six-foot fence, you know, you're not really gonna solve the problem of someone being able to see into your yard and down into your pool, looking at you and your kids. So, yes, you can have, you know, some trees and vegetation, but-
Well, nor would you necessarily standing on the top of a ladder to a swimming pool. So, you know, which is an active use.
Right, 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 right. But my point is, is-
Accessory structure.
Yeah, but my concern is in regards to this. I mean, you know, if you're gonna have a structure like this, typically, it's not just one person just out there, you're gonna have a group of, or, or let me rephrase. If someone did have a group of people in their yard, backyard, and they're wanting to, you know, hang out, you know, do whatever, you've got 10 people, they're sitting up there, only one or two people, I don't know, I don't skateboard, but if, you know, one or two people are using the half-pipe or the ramp, and you've got six other people just, you know, hanging out, and it's 9:10, 11:00, 12:00 o'clock at night, and they are, you know, supposedly, you know, they're not meaning to do anything, but they're, you know, they're there, and they're causing, you know, concerns for, you know, parents or whatever, I mean, I-
Well, for, I'll give you an example. They won't be along the fence line, like in this particular case that Mr. Hatch mentioned, because they do have to meet principal structure setbacks, which in our standards zoning residential districts, there's 20 feet.
Right.
So even if you're standing, it's three feet measured from existing grade to the top part of that platform that you stand on. So let's say you're a six-foot person, and you're nine feet in the air then, but you are 20 feet away from that fence line.
Right.
You're not three feet away from the fence line.
Right.
So the vantage point changes.
It does.
You may or may not be able to see over that fence. I highly doubt that you'll be able to see, and it's only eight feet wide, so you're only gonna have one, maybe two, mass, the most, you'd have three people on one side at the most, because they have to have room to get back and forth.
I'm just, my concern is that I don't know if that's gonna be enough, but.
Okay.
Any other question? Commissioner Dix?
Thank you. You know, our responsibility is, of course, only to find whether the ordinance is consistent with the plan. It's not to nitpick and to suggest it should be three feet, four feet, five feet, whatever. So I understand that, so please take my comment or question to you with a grain of salt, and that is that even though you have these broad parameters about what can happen in a backyard, and you felt like, you felt like this was necessary to come up with this, I've known of situations in backyards and rural parts of our county that are like a mini Disney World. It's not just skateboard parks. That would, that would not be permitted under this, that they were within the city. But they have structures, they have just gigantic group trampolines, they have zip lines that go hundreds of feet across the way, they have elevated tightrope walking with harnesses, so if the kids fall, they supposedly will be okay.
That sounds like the RSB zoning district down in Gibsonton.
So my question to you is, why do we have, why do you feel compelled to draft an ordinance that covers only one specific recreational activity, so that when somebody complains the next time about having the, you know, the 20-foot trampoline that is elevated to six feet in the air, because they need that much room in order to bounce, and the neighbor complains, now we gotta go and draft a new ordinance? And now we gotta go and have a consistency hearing before the planning commission again? I mean, doesn't it kind of make sense that we broaden our perspective and try to come up with something that fits all of those things?
A lot of what city council does in this, when it comes to these types of amendments, is people's needs and wants in their yards change over time. What they do with their property change over time. It's just that it's, it's magnified to a totally different degree than it is in rural areas, because you are, we're dealing with an urban area that has literally 40- and 50-foot lots that are 80 to 100 feet deep, stacked on top of one another, where houses are being built out to their maximum sizes, and they've got these little tiny yards, and they want to cram Disneyland in a 20-by-20-foot patch, and that becomes exacerbated over time, property to property.
But all you're doing is prohibiting skateboard parks.
This is-
You're not prohibiting-
It's particularly skate-
Giant trampolines or trapeze or tightrope, you know, aren't doing any of that.
That's correct.
So, I'm just wondering, and again, I don't mean to criticize your ordinance, because that's not even our purview, but it just-
Honestly, that hasn't become an issue, until it's an issue with city council, and it isn't.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes. So, they, the structures are currently permitted in the city, right? Are people just building them ad hoc without any sort of input from the city? Because I thought the gentleman said that a couple of them were going through the permitting process now.
The underlying rules in the current code have an allowance for accessory structures.
So they're covered under the accessory structures?
Just broad accessory structure regulations.
So why is this one in the side yard setback? Shouldn't it be, or does, or is the accessory structure rule, does it allow it to go further, closer to the fence?
Accessory structure rules in current code is three feet-
Okay.
From the side and rear.
Got you.
And 60 feet from the front.
Okay.
So it really pushes things back. That's why pools are usually set so far back in yards and stuff.
And I have a question for Mr. Hay now, actually. Clarification. These objectives that staff is using to substantiate the consistency finding, could you just go through each one and explain to me how what's being requested relates to these objectives? They seem a little vague to me when I read through them.
David Hay, planning commission staff, well, usually with some of these land development codes, there's not specific policy direction that deals specifically with these type uses, so we start looking for the specific and then kind of broaden out as, as we go to see what, we basically looked at the protection of residential neighborhoods in regards to, like, this gentleman's issue about his residential privacy. So that was under some of these overall residential development or redevelopment, the protection of that. Also, dealing with since the uses, since the requirements deal with residential and commercial properties, it does, we did include that commercial uses are in character with the scale of that surrounding community. So they were a very generalized policy that we found in the comp plan. Hope that, does that-
Yeah, that, that answers my question. I just found them, you know, in support of what Commissioner Dick spoke about, we're being very specific, it seems, with this, and then we're supporting it with these very broad and generalized things, and that makes me very uncomfortable. I also had some questions about the dimensions and where they came from. I've heard some talk go around about it. I don't want to get into that, because that's not our purview, but this whole request seems a little, I don't know, rushed to me, and I won't be able to support it, just simply because of my questions on the land use policies that we're using to substantiate our consistency fund. Thank you, though, for the information.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I have one question for Kathy. With this new definition, would it prevent something like what the gentleman showed in the slides earlier?
Yes.
Okay. And even if it did, and someone still built a, something that was in conformance, let's say, with either the code or the ordinance, let's say, what if, I'm just sort of thinking, thinking about what's gonna happen next to this gentleman, because they're gonna, you know what's gonna, I know what's gonna happen next, lights, because they're gonna start using it in the evening. And did, did that even come up as a, you know, as an issue in terms of defining what a skateboard ramp is and where it could be placed, even as, as an accessory structure, let's say?
No, not the lighting aspect, no.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Gardinas?
My question is also in reference to, kind of looking at it from the bottom-up approach, you know, kid pulls out one of these things and plays with it, sound, you know, you know, middle of the day, somebody's got their baby sleeping, and all of a sudden, you know, are there, is there anything in there that holds back the possibility from it being too, you know, too loud in that extent? You know, maybe some of them do have the pipe at the, you know, at the top that allows for that sound, maybe some of them aren't allowed for that, so that, you know, restriction in that side of it all.
With this regulation, it's under paragraph C, it's 27-290.9(c) for noise attenuation, because again, this regulation deals with the placement of, these construction and placement of these within the yards that are allowed, or the sizes that are allowed. It does include installing six-foot-high solid fence along the entire length of property line between the ramp and the adjacent residential use. So to commercial, it wouldn't matter, but to residential, you would have to do a solid barrier. And then number two, it also includes landscaping requirements every 20 feet, and then, should we construct this with sound dampening materials such as insulation, foam board sheeting, rammed earth, or similar methods? So if you're building one, sometimes they actually do, like, put in, they actually put the dirt into it, so they don't hear all the reverberation from the boards and stuff. There's also foam insulation they can use. It is required as noise attenuation.
So even for the mobile ones? Or is this just cover the ones that are solidly built, or does this also cover the ones that are?
This goes back to the question of, they're not allowed in the front yard. So this deals with the ones where they're legally placed by this regulation. So the ones that are out in the driveway are not technically covered by this, they're just not directly permitted. I'm sorry? Exactly. And you wouldn't want to do rammed earth or anything on your driveway, obviously. So that's where, and it says, the last sentence of this is that, "The use of these ramps shall not violate any portion of chapter 14," which is our general offenses chapter, and noise regulations are in that chapter. So generally speaking, if you're violating noise in any way, shape, or form, then there could be a problem.
Okay. Any other questions?
Very quickly, before you step down, just a quick follow-up on Commissioner Cardenas' question, because I think if I heard a citizen who was kind of good enough to come forward, if I understood it right, it almost sounded like they were amplifying measures to take the sound that was loud as is and make it sound even louder. The provision we just talked about talks about the requirement to install dampening provisions. Is there anything in here that would prohibit a citizen from, you know, actually incorporating measures that amplify sound while they're dampening at the same time? Is there anything that affirmatively precludes them from amplification, or is that just outside the realm of this?
Well, the general statement at the end, that you can't violate the noise ordinance.
So that'd be covered by the catch-all?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay. Someone like to make a motion? I'm already in.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that the planning commission approve the attached resolution that we have been discussing, and find that it is consistent with the imagined 2040-Tampe comprehensive plan, and then forward that recommendation to the Tampa City Council.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Dick, second by Commissioner Dowdy. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So, those that are opposed, please raise your hands. Okay, so we have seven in favor, and then those opposed, Commissioner Moreno, Commissioner Joseph, and Commissioner Green. So the motion passes seven to three. Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to item number 5C, cemetery, the cemetery definition.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Danny Collins with the Planning Commission. Our next amendment is change the definition of cemetery in the land development code. The proposed change is to section 27-289.15. Last meeting in December, you guys didn't have any questions. Staff found the request consistent, and staff's here to answer any questions if you have them.
Staff, any comment or, nope. Any questions from Commissioners? Actually, let me ask, any public comment first? Jumping forward. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How does this work, and I don't know, maybe this is for, for staff, regarding, like, pet cemeteries? Is that, you know, covered?
Kathryn Coyle, City of Tampa. Yes, the, the new proposed definition includes animal remains. Our current definition does not. So, we're actually morphing ours to merge in, bring in the extra, extra language from the state statute.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dix, do you have?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anybody, any other commissioners? Okay, someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move that the Planning Commission approve the attached resolution finding proposed land development code text amendment language regarding definition of cemetery consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward recommendation to City Council.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dowdy, second by Commissioner Moreno. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the last City of Tampa item, general cleanup.
Danny Collins again with the Planning Commission Staff. Our next item is the general cleanup. It proposes changes to Section 27-156 and Section 27-184. At the last meeting in December, you guys had questions if the cleanup was introducing newer tighter regulations on any of the city's special districts. Staff found the request consistent, and staff's here to answer any questions.
Thank you, City of Tampa, Catherine Coyle. I apologize for coughing so much, too. This actually does fall under the general cleanup header. If you look and see where there's new language that's added referencing specific zoning districts, PD, PDA, and then you see the introduction of language, it's in a list format for Seminole Heights, and then the tables as well, Seminole Heights, Neighborhood, Mixed Use, all of those districts already exist in code. It was an oversight, quite frankly, not to list them out where all the other special districts are listed. You'll see that, for instance, on page five of eight of the handout from us, in Paragraph C, this is just as an example, PD, PDA, MAP, YC, CBD, Channel District, those are all special districts. SH and NMU are also special districts that exist in code, they just weren't listed in this section. So it's cleaning up the references in each section of code to make sure that no matter where you are, you can find where to go if you need that regulation. There were some footnotes that had been dropped here and there through publication, and some of them, you'll notice, it's, the one is underlined, and then it says seven, because unfortunately the table refers to footnote seven, but it really is seventeen, and when you read footnote seventeen, that's the actual right footnote. So as opposed to going back and finding that ordinance that might have been twelve or fifteen years ago, it's a lot easier just to tell immunity code again, put the one back in, you're referring to the wrong number. So really, these are all cleanup, none of this is actually new language. I'm available for any more questions.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Any questions from commissioners? No questions? Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Bernstein?
I would move that the Commission approve the proposed cleanup measure language as consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bernstein, and second by Commissioner Moreno. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to City of Tampa Plan Amendment Briefings.
Good afternoon again. David Hay with your Planning Commission Staff. That's not the right one. Let's try this again. David Hay, Planning Commission Staff. We have a bunch of plan amendments for your review today in this briefing. There's five total. If we count the parks separately, there's eleven, but we're going to do the first four, and then Danny's going to get up to do the parks. First one, it's TACPA 1917. This one is located within the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically the West Tampa Urban Village. It's just right there to the west of UT. Here we have an aerial of the subject site. This is the subject site right here. This is the University of Tampa. We have North Willow Avenue to the west, North B Street, Cass Street is up here. This area is predominantly, you could see warehousing, some light industrial. It is becoming more intense. There are some office uses up here. UT is purchasing some of these properties. When we were out there, we noticed that UT has now crossed the railroad tracks. These are the railroad tracks that come through downtown behind UT and then go down into South Tampa, and then this is the Walmart down off Kennedy. This is a privately initiated amendment, it's small scale, it's approximately 1.78 acres. The applicant is looking, is currently, the site has a general mixed-use 24, future land use category. The applicant is looking to go to an urban mixed-use 60, future land use category. Here we have the adopted future land use map. This kind of looks like a light blue, the subject site, and most of these properties here are all that general mixed-use 24. To the north, northeast, you could see the urban mixed-use 60. This may look familiar, this was a plan amendment about a year ago. Down this blue represents UT, that's public semi-public. There is some other, UMU 60 to the south along Kennedy, and then some residential 20 and CMU 35 to the west of the subject site. It's hard to tell, but the color has changed, and it would be that urban mixed-use 60, similar to what's to the northeast and to the southwest. Under this amendment, currently the site can be considered for forty-two dwelling units or a maximum of 116,305 square feet. Remember that general mixed-use 24 allows industrial, commercial, and residential. Under the urban mixed-use 60, the residential density would increase to a maximum of 106 units or a maximum of 251,992 square feet. Also remember, under the urban mixed-use 60, a developer can either use the Floria ratio or the unit count, whichever is more beneficial for them at the time of development. This would allow for a higher residential density and greater commercial intensity, but would remove that, any consideration for that light industrial uses. Questions? None? Okay.
Jennifer Malone again with your Planning Commission Staff. I'll present on TACPA 1919. This is located in the West Shore Planning District, also within the West Shore Business Center and the Oxford Park neighborhood. We're on North Dale Mayberry Highway, south of West Cypress Street. They also have North Hines. This is the Courtyard Marriott to the north. This is general location of the new Tampa Midtown Development to the north, which you might be familiar with. To the south, they have a Wawa that's at the corner, and as you know, there's a variety of commercial uses along North Dale Mayberry Highway, and then we do have some single-family detached between North Dale Mayberry Highway and North Hines. It is a privately initiated amendment, it is small scale, at approximately 2.69 acres. The subject site has two future land use designations. It's residential 20 and regional mixed-use 100. This will take it to the regional mixed-use 100, future land use designation. This is the adopted future land use map. That dark purple is the regional mixed-use 100. As you can see, it's pretty predominant along that North Dale Mayberry Highway corridor. I also have community commercial 35, which is the red. Residential 20 is this brown, dark brown color. Residential 10 is the orange, that's your single-family detached. And then we have the Interstate 275 to the north of the subject site, and identified with the right-of-way. And then the proposed will just take that sliver of the residential 20 and take it to regional mixed-use 100, so the site has a unified adopted future land use. This would increase the potential in density from about 237 units to 276, and it'll increase the amount of square feet to about 400,000 potential, and it would result in the entire subject site having one adopted future land use designation. And that's my presentation. Do you have any questions? Great. Next is 1920. This is the Memorial Hospital in South Tampa, which you all might be familiar with. It's also located in the Palmasia Pines neighborhood. It's a little confusing on the aerial because there's a couple different components, but we're at South Habana Avenue, West Swan Avenue, South Armenia, MacDill, South MacDill's out of frame, but it's over here to the west, and there's single-family detached along West Swan, and then a variety of commercial uses and a lot of medical office and hospital support uses in this area. It is also privately initiated, small scale, at about 8.78 acres. It has numerous future land use designations, a large portion of the site is already public semi-public, but there's also some community commercial 35, community mixed-use 35, and residential 20, and this amendment would just also bring it into the one unified future land use of public semi-public. So as you can see, we have a couple different colors on the adopted future land use map. The blue is the public, so a lot of the hospital already is public, but there's also this community commercial 35, community mixed-use 35, and residential 20 in the area. We also have residential 6 to the south, that's a single-family detached that I pointed out earlier, and then resident, community mixed-use 35 is also predominant in the area. And this would just change those properties to public semi-public that's under the ownership of the hospital. The public semi-public does not have a maximum defined on their, for their FAR or density. It's guided by the surrounding development pattern, and it needs to remain sensitive and compatible with the surrounding development pattern, so this would actually give them no maximum, but with the caveat that they need to be sensitive and compatible to the surrounding development pattern, and the amendment will assist in the master planning of the hospital, only having the one adopted future land use. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Nope.
Again, David Hay with your Planning Commission Staff. The next item is TACPA 1921. This is a text amendment. This is publicly initiated by the Tampa Legal Department. They are proposing the deletion of Neighborhood Policy 5.1.9. The legal department has deemed that this policy is legally problematic by their department based on case law regarding protected classes. There was a concern that someone could make an assumption that the city regulates a use based on their popularity by the wording of the policy, so they are recommending its deletion. Excuse me. Questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item E, the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-18, A through G, future land use map amendments.
Okay, this is our last one. Danny Collins with the Planning Commission Staff. This is Tampa Plan Amendment 1918, it's Parks A through G. For this batch, we'll look at seven parks throughout the city. Quick background, this is a public initiated request by Tampa City Council to recognize existing city of Tampa parks. Each park is listed on the City of Tampa's Dedicated Park List, and all sites would be recognized through the recreational open space future land use designation. Our first park is AIDS Memorial Park. It's in the central Tampa Planning District, and more specific, specifically, it's in the Hyde Park Spanish Town Creek neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. Here, you'll see the site, it's outlined in purple. Publix on Bay Shore is just to the north of the subject site. This is Bay Shore Boulevard. This is Tampa General Hospital, and this is West Hyde Park Place. This is the adopted future land use map. The site currently has two future land use categories. The bottom portion is residential 83, and then this triangular piece is RMU 100. There is recreational open space along Bay Shore to the east of the subject site. There is residential 50 to the west, and RMU to the north. This is the proposed future land use map. Currently, the site can be considered for 60 dwelling units and just over 30,000 square feet of non-residential development. The request would remove the consideration of residential, non-residential development from the site. Are there any questions? Our first one. Our next park is Site B, it's Ballast Point Park. It's in the South Tampa Planning District, and it's in the Ballast Point neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site. You'll see the site here, it's outlined in purple, and then this is the Tampa Yacht Club just to the south of the subject site, and there's some residential just to the northwest and west of the site. This is an aerial, or I'm sorry, this is the future land use map. The site, majority of the site is currently recreational open space, it's mostly the southern portion, and then there is this residential 20 just to the north, that's currently residential 20 just to the north of the site, and then this area in here is all residential 20. This is the proposed future land use map. Currently, the site can be considered for 40 dwelling units and just over 44,000 square feet of non-residential development. Again, this would remove the consideration of residential, non-residential development from the site. Any questions on this one? Our third park is Centennial Park. It's in the central Tampa Planning District. It's in the historic Ebor neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. The site's outlined in purple. This is the Ebor City State Museum just to the north of the site. There is commercial located around the site and some residential. This is the adopted future land use map. The site's future land use category is residential 50, and this is the proposed future land use map showing the recreational open space in green. Currently, the site can be considered for 71 dwelling units, just under 125,000 square feet of residential development, and this amendment would put the, classify the site as recreation open space. Any questions? All right. Our fourth site is Cascaden Park. It's Site D, it's in the central Tampa Planning District, it's in the VM, Ebor neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. It's outlined in purple. You'll see the site surrounded by predominantly residential to the northeast and west, and then you'll start seeing some commercial and industrial a couple blocks to the south of the subject site. This is the adopted future land use map. This site is currently urban mixed-use 60. It has CMU 35 just to the south and east of the site, and then there's a mix of residential 10 and residential 20 to the northeast and west of the site. This is the proposed future land use map, showing the recreational open space in green. Currently, the site can be considered for 496 dwelling units and just over 1.1 million square feet of non-residential development. Again, this would put, this request would designate the site recreation open space and remove those considerations. Any questions? All right. Our next site is 22nd Street Park. It's in the central Tampa Planning District, it's in the old Seminole Heights neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site. It's outlined in purple, this is Rotlaid Park Drive. There are residents to the north and west of the site. This is Rogers Park Golf Course just to the east of the site, and Tico owns some property to the south of the site. The site has two future land use categories. This gray represents the light industrial, and then this brown is the residential 20. There is residential 10 to the north, south, and west of the site, and then that recreation open space is to the east, and there's some light industrial further to the south. This is the proposed future land use map. Currently, the site can be considered for 495 dwelling units and just over 2 million square feet of non-residential development. Any questions on that one? All right, this is our second to last one. This is Site F, it's Tappan, or Tappan Track Park. It's in the South Tampa Planning District and in the Port Tampa City neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site, the surrounding properties. This is the adopted future land use map. The site has three future land uses. It's, the steel color's environmentally sensitive areas. This light gray is light industrial, and then this is the residential 35 kind of in the middle of the site. This is the proposed future land use. This is the proposed future land use map. Site can be considered for, uh, 1,087 dwelling units and just over 1.3 million square feet of non-residential development. Any questions on that one? Okay, our last park is Site G. It's Tacoma Trail Park. It's in the University Planning District, and it's in the Terrace Park neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site. Uh, it's predominantly surrounded by residential uses. Um, the site has two future land use categories. Um, the northern portion is residential 10, and the southern portion is residential 20. Um, it's surrounded by residential 10, uh, to the northeast and west of the site, and further to the south, and there is some, uh, residential 20 and residential 35, uh, to the east of the site. This is the proposed future land use map, showing that recreation open space in green. Um, the existing, uh, the site can currently, uh, be considered for 308 dwelling units, um, and just under 4, 432,000 square feet of non-residential development. And that's our last park. Are there any questions?
Any questions from commissioners? Nope. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, before we move on to item number seven, the Executive Director's Report, we have to have the swearing in of the reappointed commissioners, which is myself and Commissioner Joseph. So, I'll turn it over to the clerk's office.
If you both could please stand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Your name?
Mitch Thorpe.
A planning commission appointee
Planning commission appointee.
Of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners
Of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of my appointed office
Of my appointed office.
And will support and honor
And will support and honor.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
All applicable laws of the state of Florida
All applicable laws of the state of Florida.
Hillsborough County
Hillsborough County.
As well as the bylaws
As well as the bylaws.
Beliefs
Beliefs.
Vision
Vision.
Mission
Mission.
Policies
Policies.
Procedures
Procedures.
And standards of conduct
And standards of conduct.
Of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission.
Of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission.
I hereby through this oath
I hereby through this oath.
Affirm that I will perform the duties
Affirm that I will perform the duties.
Of this public trust
Of this public trust.
In a fair
In a fair.
Equitable
Equitable.
And ethical manner
And ethical manner.
Behitting the dignity
Behitting the dignity.
And responsibilities
And responsibilities.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Executive Director's Report.
All right, good afternoon. Melissa Sordina, Executive Director. That was a test to see which one of you all could remember the words the best. Um, so at your seats is, um, my Executive Director's Report. Um, a couple of things to highlight. We are gonna be moving back into this floor over the course of this week, um, so by Friday we will officially be in business here. Um, as part of the renovations to the air conditioning, well, it wasn't a part of it, but at the same time, HTV has upgraded the feed in this room, so it looks better on the monitors. And as part of that, they, um, have taken kind of control of what you see on the monitors in front of you. Now, I know they're all sort of tipped at an angle that is making their glare from the lights. We're gonna fix that between the, the two, before the public hearing, but, um, the, the question is, um, there are two choices now of what you see before you, in your monitors. Either you see what is on these screens, or you see what's on the computer here. What is on these screens shows what's on the computer, but it switches to like show me instead of show a map at some point that might still be sitting there. Um, they can't flip back and forth in the meeting, so we told them to try it the new way. The, the old way was showing just what was on the computer. We told them, try the new way today and see whether you like it. But we would like your feedback so that we can kind of memorialize with HTV how the feed is gonna be in here for all of your meetings. Okay.
I don't like it. Yeah, I like it the old way.
You like it the old way? Okay. Cause like it's gonna show you in just a minute.
Well, we can watch it up there.
Right, yeah.
And we can always see our maps here. That's, I don't need to see what I'm seeing up there here.
Exactly.
David, if you're on the side, you can't look up there.
I started on the side. You can't.
I agree with Commissioner Joseph.
Okay, well, we'll have them switch it back for the, for the next meeting in February. Um, so, um, that's exactly the kind of feedback we needed to get. Um, I wanted to let you all know that based on our poll, it looks like February 6th would be the best date for the Planning Commission Retreat. That would be, um, from around lunchtime to about four o'clock in the afternoon. And we will send out a scheduler, um, for that time. Um, a previous planning commissioner, commissioner, Bowen Arnold has offered us some space in the Pearl, it, um, which is right near the, um, Armature Works in Tampa Heights. Um, so we'll be going there and, um, have lunch and have our retreat. Let's see. A couple of things to highlight that have been going on, um, towards the middle of December and then just last week, the Board of County Commissioners has been having a series of workshops relating to, uh, financial, uh, land use and infrastructure policy, and how they all intersect, um, in a way to create sustainable growth. And, um, for many of you, you know that updating the county's comprehensive plan has been something we've been working on for a while, and, um, I think we are getting some really great direction from the Board of County Commissioners on very specific policy, um, changes they would like to see. Um, so I presented, um, sustainable land use policy on Thursday, and it's a pretty meaty presentation. On the 16th of this month, there will be a presentation on infrastructure policy, and then we are supposed to have a wrap-up presentation on all of it on February 6th. So my intent is that at your February meeting, um, there would be a synopsis of all of this work so that you all can have some input into this. The, uh, Board has also asked that there be community outreach on these policy directions and priorities, and that would take place, um, ideally in the March timeframe so that then they could have something brought back to them in April on the results. So, we're seeing some really positive movement in updating the, the county's plan. Let's see, uh, I wanted to highlight that on, um, January 20th, as part of the Martin Luther King Jr., um, parade, we'll be having a, a walking, I don't think it's called a float when you're walking, but we'll be walking in the parade, um, as part of the Vision Zero effort, and, um, we've put out a call for volunteers, so anybody who's interested in joining us as walking, in walking to raise awareness specifically for the Vision Zero, um, effort, uh, we'd welcome that. Um, I highlighted a number of things that, um, have been going on over the last month, but one that I specifically wanted to highlight and asked, um, Sean College to be here to discuss was that there was a Tampa Bay Regional Resiliency Summit last week, and, um, Sean took part in that, so I was gonna ask him to share just a little bit about what was discussed there.
Sean College, Director of Strategic Planning, Environmental Research for the Planning Commission. Uh, if you're not aware, there was recently created a Tampa Bay Resiliency Coalition. Counties and cities in the area coming together to share information, data on resiliency. How cities and communities can respond to threats of natural disaster, of climate change, et cetera, and, which is a, which first happened in South Florida, and we're kind of modeled, modeling this coalition after that. Last week was, as Ms. Sordina mentioned, was the first summit, and they plan on doing this summit annually. Your Planning Commission staff has great some expertise in dealing with these kinds of, uh, vulnerability analysis. We performed a vulnerability analysis for the city of Tampa in regard to sea level rise, and we're currently working with Hillsborough County Government and a consultant at USF to do a community vulnerability study for Hillsborough County. So in that, I think they, it was one of the reasons they approached a Planning Commission staff to be a part of the staff that helps support the Resiliency Coalition. I sit on the Planning and Management Committee for that coalition, and I was also asked to assist in the planning of the summit because of our planning, long-range planning, and outreach, uh, work that we have done for many years here. So I did assist in that, and then I was also asked to, to, um, facilitate or the, or moderate the final panel of the two-day event. Um, so I facilitated a session or moderated a session on increasing local resiliency and regional collaboration. The summit was really well-attended. I was really impressed. I think it sold out, and I know, I think we had at least two Planning Commissioners there, um, from here. Um, it was a really good event. There were a lot of, of good, uh, sessions. Um, US Representative Charlie Crist attended and spoke, as well as the mayors of Tampa, St. Pete, and Clearwater had a panel session. So there was a lot of high-level involvement, or a number of US, um, senators, or Florida senators, I should say, were representatives. We also had the state of Florida's chief resiliency officer who attended and, and spoke. So it was a really good effort, and I think a lot of people appreciated it. The final exercise of the two-day event, which followed my moderation of my final panel, which kind of set up for this final exercise, was a tabletop exercise, which all the remaining people who were attended in this big room went through an exercise where we tried to determine what local governments want or need, um, to help in this effort, and what the region needs or could support to help in this effort of resiliency. And the results of that session were meant to feed back to the staff of the coalition to help them determine not only what the prioritize, priorities are for them in future efforts for the coalition, but also they're gonna be creating a regional resiliency plan, and this, what the, the results of that exercise will help them determine what they need to be doing in this plan. So it was a great effort. We just wanted to let you know a little bit about it, and we'll continue to be involved from a staff, staffing standpoint, and probably be involved in next year's summit as well.
Thank you.
Could I add a few things?
Can I?
You don't have to. I mean, I was one of the commissioners who was there along with Tony, and, um, I didn't, I didn't bring my notes, so I might be off on some of my facts, but it was, I was surprised how well-attended it was by a lot of elected officials. Like Sean mentioned, um, I think I heard that Tampa Bay was considered the second most vulnerable community in the country. Um, they had a, uh, presentation from the city of Norfolk, and I thought one of the striking moves they made is they did a hundred-year plan, and, um, they had the community rank what they thought the most important assets of the community were. And then they said, okay, which ones of these are, are likely to be underwater because of sea level rise, and that helped kind of build the support for the community to protect those. And every parcel of land in their county or city, it might be city-county there, um, basically has to handle its own water. And they stopped telling people what neighborhood they live in, and they refer to where you live by what watershed you're in, which I thought was genius. Get people to really understand how it's kind of all connected. Um, they said the cost of solar had come down over 50%. It was a huge number in like the last nine years. City of St. Petersburg measures their rise in sea level, and I think it was, it had risen seven inches in nine years, or I'm kind of looking at Sean to, am I wrong on that?
We've recorded in the St., the St. Pete Tide Gauge about an inch a decade over the last 70 years.
Okay, 70, not 70.
And so, uh, there's actually a historic record of about an inch of sea level rise every decade, about every decade for the last 70 years. And now there's also evidence that's being told at this summit and others that, that it is definitely, we have scientific, scientific evidence that that is accelerating now as well.
Okay. Oh, and there was someone there from Moody's Credit Rating, and they, she talked all about how really environmental factors are really looked at now when they're doing those bond ratings, which I thought was, I didn't know that was occurring, so it was, um, it was definitely worth the two days, and Sean did a great job on moderating his panel.
Okay, Commissioner Gray?
Uh, thank you, Ms., Ms. Chairman. I just have a quick question about the conference. Um, I wanted to be there, but I couldn't, but, um, um, I was curious as to how the issue of critical infrastructure, uh, was dealt with, or, uh, prioritized even, uh, as part of the, the broader discussion, especially when you had roomful of politicians, or at least the participation of a lot of politicians. How did that go over? Or did, did it?
I'm not sure I recall a session specifically on critical infrastructure, and, I don't know if any other commissioners were able to crawl something on that.
Uh, I, I guess what I, what I recalled was, uh, at the end of the first day, uh, Pinellas County, uh, kind of led a discussion, and it, it's really the greening of the infrastructure and, and how important it is to, uh, not just have the concrete, but also to bring the community design into the infrastructure. Um, you know, the low, low-intensity development, that sort of thing, uh, and, uh, being able to, uh, bring your, your stormwater through natural areas for filtration and making those parks. And, and so there was, there was talk during the conference of, of those sorts of issues.
Living shorelines came up a lot.
Yes. Right.
Well, yeah, to a certain extent, because, I'm sorry, uh, just to follow up, because, um, I've, I've been sort of following what's been happening, um, in, in New York after the rebuild-by-design effort was launched after Hurricane Sandy, of course, and, and of course, you know, they, they adopted the Big U for, for Manhattan, which some people loved the idea. Other people say, well, it's ridiculous. How are you gonna build a big berm around Lower Manhattan? It just doesn't make sense. But, uh, there were also other alternatives for protecting, um, the shoreline, um, the port, port, the port of, um, Newark, um, and other, like, cause the critical infrastructure elements that, that, that were in the, um, the harbor and, and, and going up, up to Hudson, let's say, in the east, uh, part of the East River. Some ideas like, um, the, the flo, um, floating, um, um, jetties or, I'm using, is that, is that a bright name? Yeah. Um, those were, those were proposed, um, you know, as, as an alternative that could be done quicker, uh, and could provide even, even better, better, better protection. So I'm just wondering if that, you know, if those types of discussion will ultimately come up, or as, as, you know, as, as, as part of the solutions or potential solutions, if, or, uh, I, I guess I'm just curious, is when, when will we get to that, that discussion about what, what to do?
No, I think we're already there. I mean, I, I think communities all over Florida are already having those discussions, particularly the ones that are getting hit hardest right now, um, South Florida. St. Petersburg is experiencing high tide flooding in some of their roads already. So I think those discussions are already happening. Um, the community vulnerability study that we're working on, and it, with Hillsborough County staff and USF, is, has finished the first phase, and I think they came and presented to you all about, they, just what are the vulnerabilities. We're, they're working on the second phase now, which are gonna be, what are the mitigation, potential mitigation measures? And some of those could, could be berms, could be, um, buildings that have breakout walls from flooding, uh, elevating structures, elevating pump stations, elevating roadways, and, and how long those types of things will be functional and be able to survive. So, um, yeah, those discussions are already happening, I believe.
We'll, we'll soon find out. Miami's already, Miami Beach at least, is already implementing a lot of those, those types of measures, but, um...
Yep. Yeah, there was a presentation from Miami Beach at the, at the Resiliency Summit. It's very interesting what they were doing.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, thank you. Melissa.
I would just, um, conclude by saying that, um, we're going to have a Public Information Committee meeting in the Manatee Room. That's also where generally we serve, so that's how we bribe you into getting input on, um, in that committee's discussion. So that, that concludes my presentation. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, under other business, I, I don't have anything under Chair's business. Any old business? Any new business? Okay. Committee reports? Any committee reports? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Affordable Housing Board, uh, met this morning. Um, nothing really exciting, cause we did not have quorum. Um, so the biggest thing that they were really discussing was the, um, the legislation session opens up, uh, you know, tomorrow, and we're just really hoping that, uh, the county, you know, gets the, uh, funds that should be appropriated, you know, to us through the housing fund, and, uh, we're, if the, the count is not swept like it has been and, you know... And we're, if the county is not swept like it has been, and, you know, I guess historically for quite some time, we're due around $16 or $17 million, you know, for affordable housing initiatives. That would be on top of the $10 million that was already set aside from the VOCC. So we're, we'll find out, you know, what happens with that, and that was really the highlight.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes, we had, at our last City of Tampa Affordable Housing Committee meeting, we had Mayor Castor actually attend our meeting, which was great, and kind of give us her strategic vision. This is one of her key emphasis areas is affordable housing. And she had commissioned a group of citizens to basically do a kind of a stakeholders' report on affordable housing. They each brought a unique perspective, and the Affordable Housing Committee will now take the findings from that Citizens Committee and start looking at those and implementing those. The five real key action areas that they identified were to increase housing production and availability, identify and secure financial resources, prevent gentrification and displacement, align land use and zoning policies, and expand community outreach. So they found inconsistencies in all of these areas that we can, as, with our committee can start bringing those into the housing implementation plans for the city and working with them on that. So our next meeting will be this Wednesday. So I look forward to really digging into this stuff and getting something really useful to come out of it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Marina? Oh, yeah. Commissioner Dix.
Commissioner Rodriguez, that was the city affordable housing?
Yes, that was the city of Tampa.
But Commissioner Powell, what was yours?
Hillsborough County.
So the county that couldn't produce a quorum?
Well, so the Board has recently been restructured, so there's 11 people on the Board now, and there's, answer your question, no, but there's a lot of different people that are now on the Board, and the schedule recently changed at the prior sessions. I believe a lot of, like, City Councilmen members are, you know, trying to get their schedules to align with the new, you know, schedule. And I think that next meeting.
We appreciate your going. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't say, that's ridiculous. I mean, that's a huge issue. And, you know, to have people say, yeah, I'm going to serve on that committee and not show up, I don't get that.
I don't either. They should be flogged at dawn.
He seconds that motion.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for the two of you. Did you mention, did either of you mention regulatory hurdles as one of the issues facing affordable housing production and the need to address those in any way?
That wasn't brought up in our meeting. But right now, the, they're trying to set, at least for the county anyways, everything is really focused on what the Florida Legislature is going to be doing and how they're going to appropriate funds to see like what we're going to have, you know, to work with. So there, again, like, there's just, the Board's been restructured, and I just don't think that that's something that's come up, you know, as of yet, but I'm sure that it will, because, you know, Commissioner Oberman's very, you know, on it, and that's why she restructured the Board to make it, you know, a little bit better and actually be able to implement, actually, I think, make some changes and something that's going to be helpful to the citizens, but it's just going to take some time.
Okay. And Tony, you articulated what sounded like the beginning of a broad-based strategy for addressing the need for more affordable housing.
Correct.
Which could even get broader, of course, when you get into other types of implementation strategies, let's say. But that's why I raised the question about, you know, where regulations fit in with that.
And I guess one of the first things, when the mayor's task force started meeting, was there were just so many different ways to go, so many things that needed to be done. You really needed to get them focused into these five areas that I alluded to. And from that, we can start managing a program and working with that at our committee's level. So that's something that the regulatory issues are something that we've already looked at in our committee, and that was something that was reinforced with the mayor's task force of citizens. So it's something that we'll be working on at the city level.
Good.
Okay. Commissioner Marina.
At the MPO, the two action items we had, there was approval of the new greenways and trails plan, and then there were some minor changes to the MPO, Chair's Corning Committee, and how those interact with TBARDA and their new scope. The two things that might be of interest to us, because I think we've had the Health and All Policies presentation, they did present, the consultants that the MPO hired did a presentation where they are able to determine risk factors of neighborhoods based on the, sort of, the built environment, which was interesting, rather than sort of going in and doing individual surveys. And then we actually had a presentation on the streetcar, the arterial BRT from Hart, and then TBARDA's Rapid Transit Plan. And what was interesting about that, as it relates to our group, is that Hart, when they apply for the BRT to FTA, they will propose a plan that goes up Florida and crosses Linebaugh and then goes up Nebraska, rather than what we've heard from TBARDA about the intermodal being at Burden Waters. The reason being is that, under the FTA standard, Hart does not get sort of any extra credit for the future development of Greyhound, the Greyhound Track, and Kmart, whereas that's attractive for private development, like you'd have an intermodal center. It doesn't really help the FTA application. So that's why Hart chose Linebaugh, which also then doesn't have an interstate connection, which then does not create any traffic congestion for that bus service. So that, we had a few discussions around of why is the intermodal center going to be a different place than Hart making that east-west connection? So that was an interesting discussion.
Interesting. Okay, any other comments, anything? We do have a public hearing, a Hillsborough County public hearing at 5:30. We're going to have a Public Information Committee meeting prior to that in between. But other than that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.